The December 21st Select Board meeting, 20, December 21st, 2020 Select Board meeting to order. And remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. All right, and that we are meeting on Zoom. So would the clerk like to call the roll, please?
Ms. Escobedo.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Ms. Ackerman.
Assistant.
And I don't see our other member. Is Jane not coming? Do you know?
I haven't heard.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Bates, so we have a quorum.
Yes, thank you. And Jamie may join us shortly. I'm not sure. All right, I'll read the consent agenda, which is quite short today, which is town accountant warrants for December 17th, 2020, and December 18th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
All right, and that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. It's time for the town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. So just a couple of things. I did put in a, submit a memo for the board with a, with a report. I could just highlight some of that, just some follow up on the snowstorm. By and large, the, it was a pretty significant weather event, but the response by town departments was, I think, excellent. Including after, after I went to press with my memo, CPW did go back out and clear the snow from the business districts, which was, I mean, the crews were pretty tired, but they knew it was an important thing to do for, to keep it for the holiday shopping season for the businesses. So they made sure to make that commitment. And you see, I had a note on, on Nagog Pond, we did get a, our notice of intent was approved to begin working on the intake project, which has been talked about for quite a while. So that work will get started fairly soon. I did, I did add the town's support to a letter being circulated by Metropolitan Planning Commission in support of additional economic development relief from the state. I think it's, you know, I've said all the way along, I think January and February are going to be probably the most difficult months for many businesses in all of this. And so we're really trying to keep an eye on how we can help them out, including trying to work with the schools. Dr. Hunter has been very supportive of allowing high school students to support, you know, work with local businesses on social media campaigns and kind of building their, boosting their online profiles and having that county's community service. And so we're grateful for that support. And now I know, I think the student senate has gotten themselves organized to try and provide that in a more structured way. So that's a, it's a nice relationship between the business community and the school and the student population that hopefully will help out. And then just briefly, I included a presentation that the CMLP had given to the Climate Action Advisory Board about their decarbonization plan. That's something the board has interest in being presented here. I'm sure Dave Wood and his team would happily do that. We want that on a future agenda. And then we had a White Pond public forum last week that I think went very, very well. I think we had a good discussion. You know, Kate and her team, I think, did a good job showing that they listened to the comments they received and made changes to the plans to reflect those comments. And also articulated well why the plan, why, why certain aspects of the plan are the way they are, why certain trees need to be removed, why the, why the path needs to take the, the fall of the, you know, the path, it has to go on for access issues. So like I said, I think it was a good dialogue. I think we achieved a higher level of understanding with the attendees on the project. And like I said, I want to give credit to both the attendees for being, for being informed, but also being, you know, part of a dialogue instead of just kind of coming in with a predisposed opinion. And then, sorry, Jane, you want to comment on that point?
No, you finish up, and I'll just offer something at the end.
And then just a quick note that the 23 towns CBG micro enterprise grants. Is we have four businesses apply in the first round, none in the second round, but we'll continue to try and offer that support to the business community. And then the, the last two things I have, one is, we will be, we'll be, we're planning to come into the board with a presentation about our CARES funding and where that is going in early January. The program stated that you had to spend it all by December 31st of this year. But I'm told, the summary of the, of the relief bill that is supposed to be getting voted on in Congress today extends that deadline to December 31st next year, which that's going to make a lot of municipalities unhappy. I think we're all very grateful for the relief, but it was, a lot of work went into trying to apply that, those funds purposefully and quickly. And now they've given us a year, apparently given us a year extension. So one of the things that you learn when we do that presentation is a chunk of that money is being used to lease a, a temporary structure that is, you know, more, more structured than a tent, but not a permanent building. And the town is leading a coalition of area communities to submit an application to be a vaccination clinic for first responders. The state had put out an invitation for communities to do this, but they had a minimum of 200 first responders that you needed to be eligible to be able to host one of these. And we initially started talking to Carlisle about citing this at the high school. And that conversation turned into, geez, we really ought to do this together. And then Chief Tom Judge reached out to his, his colleagues in the area. And now that we have a coalition that represents over 450 first responders that we will be submitting to the Department of Public Health to host that clinic. So that's something that I think is, we're very pleased with to get that support from the area communities. We're pleased to be in a position to be able to offer that leadership. And I think it will serve us very, very well when we get into later phases of the vaccination process. So that's it for me.
Stephen, I have a question about, and Jane made, between the two of you, you can probably add some. It's the chart that was in the CMLP presentation, and at this pink, pink squares or parts of the chart jumped out at me as going from 10% in 2021 up to a high of 36% in 25, 27 of nuclear energy. And I don't understand why, I know that it's not fossil fuel, but I worry about the safety.
So, oh, sorry, the light board just discussed this. I'm sorry if you want to, as liaison, you're certainly welcome to handle it.
Well, all right, we were both there. The light board was asked, this was going to be part of my liaison report. It is on page 10 of the packet, that board packet, those pink squares. And the light board was asked if they would extend to one contract for 10 years and another one for six years. And the one for six years goes from 2030 to 2035, and it adds another 9% of nuclear energy. And the other one goes from 2025 to 2034, and it adds another 5%. So we already had a nuclear component, and the light board voted the other day on 12/9 to extend the contract and to add this other contract. So those pink squares have increased our share of nuclear up through 2035.
So the thing about nuclear, Susan, is that it is non-emitting. And so when you, and this was a part of the, this is one of my learning moments for me, listening to, look this into Light Board's discussion. Although there are obvious concerns with nuclear in terms of if something, you know, if something terrible were to happen, it's a major impact. But day to day, it is, it is, it's much less harmful on, like I said, on a day to day basis because it is non-emitting. I think everyone on the light board agreed that ideally, nuclear will be displaced by renewables. But the capacity, we don't believe is there yet, especially from a cost standpoint. And so this is really a way to low, to lower the carbon in, in the profile, in the light plant's profile. So, and Seabrook's license did just get extended, which enabled them to enter into these, into these agreements.
So I would just interject here and say that this report that was included in our packet today is significant enough that I think we will invite them in, in probably in January to speak with us so that we can educate ourselves and the public on, on this issue and a number of issues. So having said that, Jane.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, and I'm happy to talk further. This is, this whole area is what I, I have a professional company in. So happy to get into it with my other hat on, not going to weigh in necessarily, except to say that Seabrook isn't new, Susan, so, you know, there's no change in public risk. Because Seabrook operates whether or not Concord purchases from Seabrook. And Stephen's right, it's, they are zero carbon megawatts. So to, to fulfill our, our commitments as a town in our sustainability goals, that's one of the things that the, the light plan is looking at, as are many. So with that being said, I wanted to weigh in on the white, the White Pond. And as Terry had said, I will also elaborate further on this in my liaison report. And I, while I agree with the tenor of what, of what Stephen said, the White Pond Association met on Friday. And there, I think there is still a lot of work to be done. I'll leave it at that. I think the town staff did a very good job of presenting data. But just because we have the data doesn't mean we have comfort or agreement. So enough said on that.
Right. Although the, Jane, I would just add to your comments that in general, however, the tenor of that meeting was more positive than maybe some previous discussions we've had.
Yeah, I think that, I think that Stephen, Kate, and Delia did a great job. Absolutely. I'm not, that wasn't the point.
No, I hear you. Yeah. All right, good. Terry?
Yes, that's really exciting news. Stephen, I think I heard you say that the county's applying to be regional center for first responders for vaccinations. That would, that would be really exciting. I want to say that I had a very good experience this morning going to the fire department to get a COVID test. Very fast. At that department. An email we got this afternoon from the town manager that are quite upset inviting us to ask questions about the TIF agreement. And yes, I don't understand it and want a better explanation, but most importantly, I, I have to say, I find it totally unacceptable that after town council reviewed this agreement and the board finally voted it after a lot of emotional meetings, that now it was changed again. Nobody told us it was changed, they just asked us to sign it. I don't think that's acceptable at all. And I want to ask whose idea it was to change it and whether town council has reviewed those changes.
So the, when, when the article was approved by town meeting, it said substantially in the form of, which is, you know, you know, the story, it's, that's basically to cover some minor edits that don't change the intent and the financial structure of the agreement. And that's common when we're, when agreements are voted on, that a lot of times you find things that need to be tweaked or changed that are non, like I said, non-material. Walter O'Haney had asked that it be clarified that the taxable property is just the leased property. And so because the taxable property was only ever going to be the leased property, whether or not the TIF agreement said that, we said, well, that's just kind of clarifying what the status quo really is. So I, you know, we reviewed that, I reviewed that with Lane Partridge as well. And again, it just seemed like a pretty, a pretty minor thing to me. And if it, if it turns, if I misread the, the insignificance of that change, and I apologize for that. Town council didn't review that change again, because it was just a statement clarifying the reality of how it was going to be assessed and taxed. So, so, so that, that part of it, that assessment, it would be on me. But I, like I said, I think we reviewed it as, I viewed that as consistent with what the warrant, the approval of the warrant contemplated.
Even, I expressed similar concerns about it to Stephen, but the phrase, it's only the leased property. What, so it's not the entire parcel? What does that mean?
So if you, if you looked at the site plan, the project is, you know, CHDC owns a, you know, a parcel of land. They're leasing a portion of the land to Grantham or Christopher Heights LLC, or, or, you know, the name of Walter's company. And so the assessed, the assessment, the assessor, meaning the tax assessment, was only ever going to be based on the leased property because the, the property retained by CHDC is non-taxable like it is today. And so it was just to clarify, it's not the whole parcel. It's just, the TIF agreement only applies to the least, the least portion of the site. And like I said, we viewed that, I, I said that's, that's the way it is. So it, it doesn't, if people feel like it's clarifying to state that in the agreement, it, it's a, it was a, I viewed it as a positive clarification, so everyone understood how the value was being derived. Putting that statement in there didn't change how that value was going to be arrived at. It just, like I said, just stated it explicitly for the people who were to be part of the agreement.
So just to follow up, so not including it wouldn't change anything either.
Correct, correct.
To follow up, so I, I just wish that we had had an explanation before we were asked to sign it. And, and because we got that this afternoon, I reviewed the two versions, again, the one we were asked to sign and the one from town meeting, and found some minor typos and another change that might be substantial. Hopefully it's not. I'm just not comfortable with all these changes. I, I agree with what you said, Stephen, that not substantially, I mean substantially in the form of, yes, that's what town meeting going. But I think for the people who have to sign it, the select board, I think we should know exactly what we're signing. The other thing that I found that is not the typo is in section B5, it says, "The company shall submit annual report pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 23A, Section 3F." Whole thing is missing in the document we were asked to sign. So.
What section was that?
B5. So I'm just trying to figure out where all these changes have come from, why, and I'm, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the process.
Could I make a suggestion? I think it would be good for us to see the, the document that was approved at town meeting and then highlighting all of the differences in the document we're asked to sign, because it wasn't just that one. That's the one that jumped out, but the one about the leased property. But if there's others, then it should be vetted before we sign it. Or at least reviewed, and hopefully by town council.
We can, sure, sure.
Okay, any other questions about that? All right, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the joint meeting with the Concord Housing Authority. So welcome the members that are here from the Concord Housing Authority. We have, we're here today to fill a current vacancy on the board. This vacancy, if approved by both groups, will be, will seat the individual in this vacant seat through town meeting. And in the upcoming election, which is March 25th, this seat will be eligible to be filled, for the candidate to run for office and for this position to be filled for a two-year term to fill the vacancy on the board. So I, this is a joint meeting, so I'm going to ask the Rick Eifler, the Chair of the Concord Housing Authority, if he would like to open his meeting.
I see you have a forum here. Yep, yep. I'm opening the meeting for the Concord Housing Authority. I'll take a roll call. Rick Eifler here, Edward Lerner. Unmuting or?
Yeah, here, present.
Stephen Durain.
Here.
And Hester Schnipper is absent, but we have three members, we have a quorum.
Okay, and would you like to introduce your candidate?
Yeah, so Charles Phillips is Concord resident that people are familiar with, with his work on the Concord Housing Development Corporation. And he.
Housing Foundation.
I mean, Concord Housing Foundation. And, and he's here as well, and I'm sure he can answer any questions you might have. He's expressed interest in filling the vacant seat, at least until next town meeting. And any questions, he's here to answer them.
Well, thank you for stepping up to fill this vacancy, Charles. And certainly we're familiar with your work in the housing community, so thank you for that. All right, so do I hear a nomination?
Move to appoint Charles Phillips of 65 Fairhaven Road to the Concord Housing Authority Board to fill an unexpired term set to expire at the end of town meeting 2021.
Second.
And so do I hear a roll call of, of the select board first?
Yes, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And Rick, would you like to call roll for your vote?
Okay, roll call, vote for the Housing Authority, Rick Eifler, aye. Edward Lerner.
Definitely, aye.
Stephen Durain.
Aye.
And that's it for us.
Okay, so that's unanimous vote of both the Select Board and the Concord Housing Authority, and I so declare. So welcome, Charles, to your new responsibilities.
Okay, thank, thank you. I just wanted to say, excuse me, I want to say a few words, that, just to be clear, that, that your authority fills the, allows me to serve the position until the, the town meeting. And I do intend to run in the elect, in the coming election for the remaining two years of, of the term that Todd had. So, and also, this, this is a very good move. I am just giving up my position as Chair of the Concord Housing Foundation in, in January. I'd already planned that about a year ago. So Rick, Rich Feely is going to take over in January for the Concord Housing Foundation. And, and I will be ready to work on the housing, on the Housing Authority.
Well, thank you for stepping up.
We're grateful.
Yes, very much so.
We are.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that concludes our business. Do you need to adjourn your meeting, Rick?
I do. So I'll, does anyone want to move that we close the Housing Authority portion of this meeting?
I move that we close this meeting with the Select Board.
I second it.
Rick Eifler, aye. Edward Lerner.
Aye.
Stephen Durain.
Aye.
And Charles, you don't get to vote yet because you're not sworn in. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Charles.
Right, I am, I skipped the chair's remarks unintentionally, but I will return to that right now. I too want to thank the town for their recent effective response to the snowstorm. That always makes all of our residents happy and our business people as well. So thanks to all of them for that. Given that we're in the middle of the holidays and more to come, I just want to remind the public how important it is, particularly with planned activities, to follow all the measures that we now have come to learn for safe, safety in terms of COVID protocols. And encourage everyone to do this not only for your families, but for yourself and for your community. So safe holidays, everybody, and, and as we go into the new year, we hope to keep our kids in school as well. The other thing I would like to comment on is that at the last meeting, the Select Board approved the annual town meeting calendar, which included the election dates. And you just heard another reference to the March 25th election. There are a number of positions that are open. There are, there, Jane Hotchkiss unfortunately will be leaving us. Her term is concluded. We're going to lose a great deal of expertise there. And so we're definitely, and, and my position as well, I will be finishing my first three years. So there are technically two positions open on the Select Board. There are two positions open on the school committee, also for three-year terms. There is the town moderator's position, as you know, is only a one year, so that has to be voted on each year. The Housing Authority is somewhat complicated this year. They have three positions that will need to be voted on. This is going to be a challenge. One of the vacancies is for five years. So someone has finished their full term and will need to be replaced. The position that was just filled through town meeting will need to be voted on, and that will be a two-year position. And then the, the Housing Authority has a third one, a third vacancy, which will be a one-year position. So there are three openings on the Housing Authority. I, I don't remember that happening in quite a while. So that's, that's going to be a challenge for everyone, I think. So I just wanted to be clear about that, and I know the Select Board is very concerned about, we've got some big shoes to fill here in terms of Jane's vacancy. And, you know, when you look at the number of the issues that are before the Select Board, whether it's legal issues we're facing, COVID issues we're facing, the progress we've made on energy and sustainability. And there are many other concerns for the community that come to our attention in terms of keeping the character of the town. The affordability of housing comes up in a number of our committees, including the Planning Board and, and ZBA. And so we're, the Select Board is very serious about having some well-qualified candidates who can bring expertise in, in these areas. And I would just also comment that with, there will be a Select Board meeting next Monday. We don't want to ruin our record for the year. You know, I know. So here we are. And we also have, I, I do know that we have the annual liquor license renewals, which is critical, that we need to act on next week so that establishments, to the extent that they can, can continue business. And that concludes my chair's remarks. So the next order of business, since I had skipped ahead, will be committing nominations, of which we have none this week, and committee appointments.
I move to appoint Dorcas Miller of 75 White Ave to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023. Anne Marie Altman of 247 Lawsbroke Road to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023. Scott Wood of 241 Barrett. Scott Wood of two forty-one Barrett Mill Road to the Climate Action Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Robert Norton of one eighty-nine Conant Street to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion?
That was.
Oh, sorry, do I hear a second? Okay, and so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and the Chair so declares. Uh, so uh we've had a couple of weeks where we um had to forego the Committee Liaison Report, so um I'll ask uh who would like to go first on that? Susan?
Thanks, I'll go first. Um. Last week, uh, the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee met, and it was a fairly standard meeting but meeting. But they, tonight we appointed their new member, Anne Marie Altman, which makes them a, how their membership is full. Um, Economic Vitality met uh last Tuesday and, or a week ago Tuesday. And they, there was a lot of conversation about COVID, about adhering to the um COVID guidelines. Uh, because there were two businesses that had employees that tested positive. Um, and then they also mentioned, and this ties back to what Stephen was saying before about the high school. Uh, yeah, it was about the high school uh students helping the local businesses with their online present, presence for credit. And they talked about other things to help businesses, like possibly curbside pickup. Um, and other things, just because they all, everyone acknowledges how January and February, where you're going to be fairly critical. Uh, the next meeting I attended also on December eighth was the Personnel Board. And they focused on, um, they began the conversation about the future role of the Board, so they reviewed the um, the bylaws, the charter, the history. So that was the beginning of a of conversation that will take a few meet, meetings to uh work out. The Planning Board met also that same day, and Stephen reported on that last week. Um, Board of Assessors met on the tenth, I think it was. And they just, they spent most of the meeting discussing the residential exemption. Um, and uh they'll be presenting to us in, you know, January or February, or whenever we can get them on the agenda. Um, and they voted unanimously not to support it. And one of the compelling arguments was this only applies to owner-occupied um buildings, and there are eight, something like eight hundred and sixty rental units in Concord, which would not, whose landlords would, would get increased taxes, which would then pass on to um be passed on to tenants. And they, uh, Lane ran a series of numbers, which I won't go into, but um the, they said this, there are a number of commit, communities that have this. A lot of them are cities who have a much bigger um industrial or commercial tax base. And and we have ninety-one percent uh owner-occupied buildings in Concord, uh, which is the highest of any. The the next highest is eighty-something percent in Natick. So they had a very thorough and um informative discussion on this, and they'll be presenting it to us uh when we put them on the agenda. Um, I went to the Library Project Update, uh, which is a, you know, open meeting. And that, um, the two highlights for me was that they approved two uh handicap-accessible spots on the property near the new part of the building. And they formed a Sustainability Committee that includes Elise Woodward and Alice Kaufman and Kate Stanley and some other folks. So um they're going to start meeting and discuss sustainability, which was a concern of many people when the project was uh being reviewed. The council, I went to the Council on Aging, that they need two associate members, and those are one-year terms. So if anyone out there uh listening or my colleagues here uh have any ideas about people who might be willing to serve, it's a, it's a good way for a short-term commitment to get to know what the committee does, and they are involved in a whole lot of activities. They um, they did a lot, they, they pivoted like everybody else in what the, the services that, how they offer services, like drive-through meals, a drive-through flu clinic. Um, the, the um tax, income tax support that they've been able to provide in the past. They cannot uh this year at present, because you, the, the federal government will not allow you to just drop documents off. Um, you can, you know, you do that with your accountant, but uh, so they've lined up some uh local accountants that are willing to help people, but of course, that's for a fee. Um. And they discussed committees that they want to have the liaisons uh up on, and one, one of them is Board of Health and one is two-two-two-nine Main Street. But there's also Cas, Housing Authority and um a couple of others, so. That was that meeting, and then I also attended White Pond Forum and and do agree that the tenor was much better and that um there was appreciation for the listening of the, of the town to the concerns that uh citizens, citizens, including the White Pond Association, had about trees and the pavilion in the picnic area and and handicap parking. And noting that the groundwater, treatment of the groundwater and handicap accessibility are the top priorities right now. So that's my report.
Thank you, Susan. Um, Carrie.
Okay, um, so the first thing I was going to talk about was the CMLP meeting. And we've, we've already covered um the decision to extend the nuclear contracts. Um, that whole presentation, I was also present at the CAB meeting. And I think it is important to have that presentation for, at at the Select Board. I think that would be great. So the other thing that CMLP is working on is they're getting ready to implement smart meters. So um the Board has had a lot of discussion about an opt-out provision. Um, there are several people in town who want to choose analog meters instead. And um for various reasons, and so those will require more, more work, because that person will have to come out and read them, so they will be charged an additional fee. So they have to work out how that system is going to work. Um, next meeting, I was at uh the library meeting. Uh, and yes, as Susan said, they talked about the Sustainability Committee of the Library Corporation. It's going to be creating a five-year sustainability of plan aligned with the envisioned Concord. Uh, they also are going to be using CARES funding to um buy an air filtration system, or they've already bought it for the main library. So that's very good news. And um if you recall, a few weeks ago, the administrative code that we worked on in a joint meeting. Um, they've agreed to the Select Board's ideas, agreed to our revisions, and they're sending it back to us for um final approval or another meeting or or whatever, however, the Chair wants to, wants to do it. Uh, the capital planning, we had a public forum. It was pretty good turnout. Um, a lot of good questions, and so in the next few months, uh, the committee will be working to put together a final report and then come before the Select Board in the spring. And um I also attended a joint meeting of the Zoning and Planning Board, where they reviewed warrant articles that might be coming up at the next town meeting. Um, in particular, they talked a lot about the floor area ratio. And um, oh, and the Agriculture Committee also met. They have a large need for affordable farm worker housing. So um joining them at this meeting on the fifteenth of December was BJ Dunn, the Superintendent of Minuteman National Park. And he was present to discuss um some potential opportunities that the park has for housing and farming acreage. And they all discussed a possible joint meeting between the Ag Committee, the Minuteman National Park, um, and the CHDC and the Housing Foundation, so that they can put all of their, uh, all of these voices together in one meeting. So if that gets set up, I'll let you know, because I I think it would be very important um for some of us to attend, at least to listen. And then finally, um, I want to thank Linda and Stephen for putting several important items on the agenda in the past few weeks, such as the update of the transportation initiatives, the update on the townhouse renovation, and the action plan for the Select Board goals. And um this is a reminder that we're still needing to discuss the update on the affordable housing uh spending articles from two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Um, those town meeting articles. Um, also an update on public-private partnerships, what's going to be coming before us. And the town manager evaluation. And for that last item, since we all wrote our individual evals in August, they're getting someone out of date now. I'm wondering if perhaps we should shorten the process and do some goal setting for the town manager. And I'm, I'm wondering if other Select Board members think we should maybe discuss this idea possibly at our next meeting.
Anybody have any feedback?
Jane, would you like to comment? Uh, well, I was also offering to to do my liaison report next when Terry's done, but um I would also agree that I'm feeling like, you know, August was a long time ago, and we've had the benefit of town meeting and many other things in between, so the evaluation as a, a year anniversary of Stephen's employment is, is now, you know, five, four or five months out of, out of sync. So we um, we need to figure out a way to at least uh embed the correction, because it it just, it's um, it's value has changed.
Okay. All right, well, Terry, were you have uh anything else on your list?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, good. So, uh, Susan, did you want to comment further?
I, I just had a question for Terry. When you're talking about the housing spending, are you talking about the um five hundred thousand that?
Yes.
For each year, okay.
Both years, five hundred thousand. I'm a little confused. If we had like a one-page summary, I think that our explanation, I think, uh, would be easy to follow along.
Thank you.
I, I think I had transmitted the financial some, um, accounting of it, Terry, the one pager that you suggested. Um, I think where I need to, but I think there, there are the feedback from the Board, which was, which was, um, I think appropriate, uh, was a more of a narrative on what's happening with some of the projects, and that's the part that um I haven't connected with Liz and Marcia on. Uh, I, I've told them that we need to do it. It, it just hasn't, uh, we just haven't followed through on it, so we will get, we will get on it. And Chris Carmody is helping me with the public partnership. As you know, there's thirty-odd agreements that we want needed to track down and look at end dates and things like that, so uh that's in process as well.
Uh, yes, Matt?
On the point about the town manager evaluation, I, I just had anticipated based upon your uh goals or or timing of the, our Select Board goals, uh, where you had said Q two for the town manager evaluation. I mean, next week is the last meeting in Q two, so I think the time is now. I, I was actually surprised not to see the topic on this week's agenda, but um.
Okay.
Okay, I could just add, I think, um, you know, a lot, a lot has happened in the last few months, but I, I think the most important thing is to set goals, no matter what our process is, even if everything else is out of date. Um, that's what I think is the most important.
Yep, you, you've expressed that before, so thank you, thank you, Carrie. Okay, um, I, I think you also asked about, um, if I understood you correctly, um, your comment about the affordable housing um funding articles, was that just ma, mostly uh accounting for the expenditures to date as opposed to the activity for the active um up at the State House?
No, um, right, I, I, I think it's the activity today. We're trying, which, I'm trying to figure out.
Um, yeah, okay, I just was trying to defer, defer to the funding re, uh, versus the status of um bills that are still home.
That's right, that's right. I think, I think we're pretty much up to speed on the bills. We're waiting for the legislature. We keep rolling them forward.
Right.
But the, the spending today, um.
Yeah, we, I think we know what you, you're after there. Okay, good. Um, Stephen, is that something we could have ready for next Monday?
Uh, I can, I can check. Um, I mean.
Maybe, maybe not.
It is, it's a short, it's a short week, yeah.
Yeah, I know, some people are taking.
And like I said, I, I, I think I, I think, yeah, I think I distributed the spending. I think it was a request for more information, and I just, like I said, we, we've been, um, it, it's just been displaced by other priorities, so.
Yeah.
We will get, we'll get to it.
Okay. Um, let's see here. Jane, did you want to go next or?
Um, the, the, the previous week uh was a relatively uh empty week in part because the Commission on Disability postponed its meeting uh in the, to honor Hanukkah, and uh instead met this uh this previous week, which meant that this previous week I was um hard-pressed to meet all of my liaison obligations. Um, and so some of the, some of my reports will be from uh notes I've taken from conversations I've had post-meeting, because I wasn't actually able to attend them. Um, so on the sixteenth, we had the NRC as well as the Climate Action Advisory Board, as well as the White Pond. Um, uh, the White Pond uh public meeting, all simultaneous. Uh, the NRC I did not attend, and I, I know that we also had Delia with us. So that is a, uh, that's an obligation of catch-up for me uh with, when I say with us at the White Pond uh public meeting. And I think that that was a good choice for her, because she uh, her presence and um and long-term availability to the, to the White Pond area. Uh, most specifically to focus on the conservation sides of White Pond has been really important. Um, the Climate Action Advisory Board uh focused primarily on things that we've actually already taught, seen here in front of the Select Board, that being the sustainable fleet policy, as well as the uh, the CMLP's plans. Um, there was also a Rocky Mountain Institute update on the accelerator. Um, but for the most part, uh, we, we already had it first, so I won't spend any time there. And I will just also agree that I thought that the uh town manager facilitated and and uh the, and Kate and Delia did a good job reiterating data, primarily that was on Kate's end, as she's been charged with most of the responsibilities for the design um so far of our first phase with, with the White Pond improvements. Um, that being focused on uh the uh storm water retention areas as the runoff concerns and the uh accessibility uh to bring it into compliance with both the Architectural Board and the ADA. And that therein lies a lot of the debate, concern, tension, um, and ongoing conversation, which I will report on actually in my White Pond Advisory Committee report. Um, uh, the, there was not much input from the disability community at the White Pond Forum, which was unfortunate. However, they, the Commission did meet on the eighteenth. Um, and uh there had been the. And there had been, it had been Kate's intention to be at that meeting. She was injured that day and was not present, which definitely made. The, the number of meetings that followed. Clearly, we need her back in action and, and involved in, in the conversations. Because at the Commission on Disabilities meeting, there was a discussion of both the library parking plan, the, a wonderful. Report and. Component on deaf and hard of hearing accommodations. Which I think we're going to see here, and I know that Bob Andrews has approached us to. I'm sure Linda has, has heard from him to become, to get on a future agenda and I would encourage that, especially. Given that we're in the middle of townhouse recommendation renovations and some of the items which are being. Which are recommended, recommended by the report and backed up by data may actually impact some of the renovations. There was also discussion, ongoing discussion at parking at one thirty six Sudbury Road. That's a, a local area business. And then there was a long discussion about the White Pond, the White Pond Plans. The Commission on Disability continues to want more spaces at the bottom of the hill. They're worried about the length of the, of the trail as proposed with the switchbacks. And would, would like to suggest at least benches for those who might be handicapped using that. That route to rest on. And then also they want to make sure that their expert, Jennifer Brooke. Their expert on the ADA has a chance to engage directly with the, the planning. Then the, let's see, oh, I took this out of turn. I'll have to come back to the Historic Districts Commission. Don't want to leave them out, but I'm on the eighteenth now. Because we went straight from the Concord Commission on Disability meeting to the White Pond Advisory Committee meeting. Where their, their response, the response of those who attended was not as. I had hoped it would be coming out of the public. Public forum. There was some acknowledgement that the town had done. You know, had, that there was appreciation for the amount of time, energy and listening that the town had put forward. But it doesn't seem to have abated any of the concerns and those. Being both more spaces down below, concerned about the path. And the length of it as well as the appropriateness of it. There's an increasing interest in. Move, seeing the potential to move the, the. The guard shack across the beach, therefore in the minds of the White Pond Advisory Committee, perhaps offering up more spaces for parking down below. There, you know, data continues to be debated by others. So I think that the more important, that as soon as, as we can go through not just the ADA requirements, which there are multiple. Experts amongst us apparently and, but also the Architectural Board, Boards' requirements. I just, I'm hoping at some point we can just have a, a fact sheet distributed that will put some of the planning. That's gone on. To bed, to put some of the debate to bed. There was also a, a, an interest and request that tree flagging. Be done over as soon as possible of, for any of the trees that are being considered for removal as part of the. The development of a trail to get down to the, the beach. There is, you know, there's, I, I would encourage us to think about that because I think there are neighbors who are. Are imagining doing this themselves based on the, the plans that they see and I would rather have us. Make an accurate depiction rather than have those who are worried about it. Create a, you know, create a tree flagging that may or may not be accurate. Let's see, what else? It was a, it was a long meeting. Again, there was. They now attend the Carmen, the Chair of the. Of the White Pond Association also attends the Commission on Disability, so she can, she also. Added her comments from that meeting. And then in addition, there was discussion about the Bruceford Rail Trail. And they had a member from the, the Bruceford Rail Trail Committee there and they had a very, very good dialogue back and forth about. The recommendations and requests from the White Pond Advisory Committee. To the Bruceford Rail Trail for types of fencing, where it should go. And, and the needs of abutters. Don't know where that's going to go, but I thought it was a, a very positive exchange between two. Two different committees. So that's. Pretty much the, the summary of the White Pond Advisory Committee and then quickly going back to Thursday, the seventeenth. The Historic District, District Commission met to, to look at a number of. Of public hearings that are relatively minor but important actions. Many of the public hearings we might have imagined were. Were continued, however, there's continued discussion over sixty sixth Monument Street. And a, an addition and new construction there, all of which is being offered in. With great intent to maintain the architectural integrity of the, of the building, but. As always, it's fascinating to hear about the importance of maintaining chimneys regardless of their use and. And windows regardless of their age. It's one of the many places where sometimes. Practical and historic are not necessarily always in alignment. And I appreciate everybody's role because it's not always positive, it's not always appreciated. And then there was a, a long and engaged discussion about the expanding the historic districts. In, by including Jenny Dugan Road and a long give and take about. A letter that, that may be forthcoming to the residents of Jenny Dugan Road, talking about the HDC's vision. For their role, keeping in mind that it was, it were, it was a group of residents from Jenny Dugan that came to the HDC. With interest. It was not the HDC. Looking around Concord and saying, we think that would be a good spot for another historic district and, and I think that should be appreciated. That's not. It's not the way they operate. They bring their expertise to the discussion and then. Support it through the knowledge that they've gained and, and the engagement with, from the community. Since obviously it's the act of town meeting to actually implement any changes in historic districts, so. And with that, I will, I will conclude.
I have a question. Getting back to White Pond.
Yep.
I caught part of the White Pond Forum and I, I too think the staff did a really good job. Presenting and listening, but agree also with what you said that there is still a lot of work to do. And I'm wondering. About the CPC article that's going to be coming up at town meeting and the White Pond Project. And whether you think that. We will have these things resolved and these debates put to bed in time. For town meeting. Do you think that, I, I guess that's the goal. Do you think that we're on track to do that?
Well, I think that, I mean, and again, are we on track that, that, eventually that's town meeting's decision. But I will say that I think that everybody in Concord as a whole, because you know, this is not. Just the, under the, the. This is not just the abutters and the, those who live in and around White Pond's decision. Because should, should the decision come out at town meeting? Not to go forward with any of the proposed improvements. Then it is likely that the beach would not be available in the upcoming summer because. The, the, the improvements for, for disabilities. Are required to operate the beach. And I hope that that's appreciated. That's not to say that we've landed on the plan that's going to work as of yet. But, you know, I think, and I also think that there's. Sometimes facts are tough and the facts that go along the side of operating municipal facility. And the facts that went along the side of operating a private beach association are different. And it, that means there's change and change is hard and this is something that was stressed at the public forum and I thought that was important. You know, I've, I've been involved in many citing issues around, in my professional life around renewable energy. You know, where, where the, the project is in everybody's best interest, but it, it, it's always painful because it always requires change. So, again, I'm not a tea leaf reader here. I think we need to do more. But I don't want to hold the town responsible for having done not enough. Because I think our facts have been accumulated. I think that we need to maybe boil them down much more concisely. Into a one page fact sheet along the lines of this is what ADA compliance requires of the town and this is what the Architectural Boards. Requires of the town in order, compliance of the town in. Granting access from parking to beach. Now, how we do that then falls in the middle and. You know, I think that, that there's been nothing but goodwill and hard work put towards us so far, so I. And I think that's true from those who are worried. I mean, I don't think this is a, a meeting of. Of ill intent, but I think this is a meeting of, of around change. And we'll see how we can educate and then ultimately it's going to be up to those who come to town meeting to make a decision. I just hope that everybody keeps in mind and we need to be very clear about the facts on this. But that if certain, certain actions have to be taken in order for the beach to be accessible to the public. The public has to make sure that they understand that they're making that decision.
Jane, could I ask Jane a question? You're muted, Linda. Sorry, I gave you the go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Jane, I just wanted to follow up on the, the Jenny Dugan conversation, so. What are, was, what are the next steps or the? Well, as I understand them and, and I don't want to take on the role of the HDC, so let me just clarify. Remember, I'm a liaison, I'm reporting.
Right.
But as I understand, there's a letter. Going, being generated by the HDC to the, to the neighborhood to let them know that what the HDC is, understands as the next steps. So I could start to articulate what I think is in that draft, but I think that's inappropriate because.
No, no, that, I just wanted to be clear that the letter was coming from the HDC to kind of.
To the, to the neighborhood. And it will be public, I'm sure. So, I mean, of course it will be. And I think it's going to be giving guidance from their perspective.
Yep, that's fine. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. Matt, would you like to go next?
Yeah, sure. So, Community Preservation Committee met and reviewed our recommendations and our priorities as well as the town manager priorities. And they updated their provisional funding recommendations to reflect the latest information that they had gotten from the Wright Tavern Project. Some late breaking updates from Kate on White Pond and one or two others. So what they did, decided was that to fully fund virtually all of the. Projects, the only two that they held back some funding on were the Wright Tavern and the CHDC buy down fund. So those have been provisionally partially funded and they've reserved about thirty three thousand dollars. To allocate pending further information for the Wright Tavern Group. So there will meet in January to finalize and vote on their recommendations based upon the additional information that they receive. So that's where we stand with the Community Preservation Committee. Then the Middle School Building Committee met for the first time in several months. And they presented an updated project timeline and hold on to your hats, basically the current timeline reflect. Suggests a move in date of, for the two thousand twenty five to two thousand twenty six school year, a two year delay. Compared to the previous projection. So that was kind of a shock. And basically what the. The project management did was they built, I think, a, a much more conservative schedule. They do say that there's opportunities to move things up. But they wanted to not have any possibility of slips from at least that date. And they're actually have some slack in terms of when. We have town meeting approval, so there's possible special town meeting in fall twenty twenty one. Or even waiting until spring twenty twenty two town meeting for approval, so. You know, the, in the, yet the schedule could accommodate all of that, so. There was discussion of a lot of options such as even a mid year move in such as happened with the high school. You know, that it's not that difficult to facilitate actually. So we expect that the, those dates could be pulled in, but it was still quite startling to see such a, a late date. Then the next steps are to come, reach a preferred design option by the beginning of March. So actually the committee is going to be meeting at a pretty furious pace between now and then to get the. Get us in a place where the schematic design can begin. And there are, you know, this design sustainability and financing subcommittee meeting and the building committee will all be meeting in parallel during. The time in between. So that's the middle school. Then the Public Access Advisory Committee got their annual update from the Comcast representative. Revenues are going flat at about eighty five K a quarter. And then they also. You know, when, and they had a lot of questions about the services, the evolution of services, the, you know, prognostication of future revenues, which Comcast will not share. And then they finalized their town meeting and town annual report submission and their photo for. The annual report, but what they're really looking for is us to have a discussion on their charter. And just to kind of, you know, refine the charter of that committee under the current circumstances, just so they're able to clarify their goals going forward. Then the zoning board of appeals met. I was unable to attend that joint meeting, so thanks for the report of the joint meeting. I was really sorry to have to miss that, but it conflicted with other obligations I had. But at the ZBA meeting last week, the thirteen B Commonwealth Avenue Project was approved. And that is a project that includes eight units, two of which, they're all rental units, two of which are state affordable. Inventory and so actually, you know, they can all count towards the, the. State housing inventory, which is really impressive. There was a very disappointing aspect though to the approval, which was. That the planning board had asked for a condition of all electric utilities. And the applicant said that he had spoken with architect candidates. To replace architect who actually passed away, the original project architect and. That all of the project personnel that they interviewed claimed that all going all electric would significantly include, increase their long term operating costs, which. I think conflict is, is wrong, okay? But nonetheless, the. But nonetheless, the, the idea that this impression is out in the industry and, you know, that clearly we're not getting a, a major, you know, new development project to go all-electric is quite disappointing. And, and in fact, the, I think the alternative condition that was off and approved by the ZBA was simply to provide conduit for two future electric vehicle charging stations to be put in place when a resident requests them. So, you know, it's very far away from what we expected. And then just before I get questions, two other applications that were put before the board had numerous issues and were continued, hoping to get them cleaned up. So, yes, Jane, I saw you had a question.
Where is this on Commonwealth Ave? I'm just, I'm, it's funny. I, I thought I knew what was happening in town and yet this.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're going down Commonwealth Ave towards, you know, the Kenny Dunn Square, you know, the triangle. Right before you hit where the parking lot for Neshova Brook Bakery is and the, the ENS Motors, you know, right before the, you start to turn off onto Commonwealth Ave, there is a vacant grass lot.
Oh, so this was the one that's been debated as to what? Yeah, okay.
And so I, I want to give the developer credit that they have come a very, very long way and worked through an arduous process with numerous committees to get to this place. And they now have a project that, you know, has, i- i- in its design, it has historical reference to West Concord. It is mixed use. It puts new residential units right in town. It has affordable. I mean, in so many ways, it's fantastic.
I know, I'm, 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 this is, I was hoping that's where it was, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, it's been approved. Those conditions have been set. It's going. But I just wanted to raise from our point of view, you know, from, from town goals point of view, we, we have a lot of work still to do. That's, that's what it.
Would this preclude it from being all-electric? I mean, did they say?
Preclude it? No. I mean, but I'm just saying that there is no kind of.
Matt, isn't it true though that there were, there was no code to back them up?
No, that we could not actually, you know, mandate this, right?
Right.
Hey, but I, that said, you know, we have gotten the kind of concession from developers in the past projects. And, and so it was something, yeah, that we hope to get here. Yeah.
If I could comment, I think one of the issues with that is that this is, this has been a three-year process and the planning board brought it up fairly recently after a whole lot of discussion on a whole lot of other issues, you know, like the mixed use and all of the things that you mentioned. And then near the end of the process, they asked for the all-electric. So it wasn't, hadn't been under consideration for a long time. It, it, it came up kind of last minute.
Yeah. And, you know, I should say, I'm still very enthusiastic about this project.
Matt, did you have anything else you wanted to report out on?
No, I think that's quite enough.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So this goes back a little bit, but I met with the Tax Fairness Committee. The main concern at that time was preparing testimony, which the committee worked on. And then the very next day, on behalf of the Select Board, we submitted testimony for this home rule petition up at the State House. It all came about pretty quickly. The, I think I've, in another forum, you already know that Stephen and I report, met with the Joint Committee on Revenue for the alcohol home rule petition from this last town meeting. I also attended the, several of the meetings that you've already commented on just because of the high interest of the Board of Assessors, the Capital Planning Task Force and CPC making their deliberations. The, there was a, I attended the two different joint school committee meetings. The school committee has approved for the second year in a row, early retirement incentive. And there, it's at a different level this year. It's a 30,000 benefit. But, and they'll be anxious to see how many take advantage of that. The chair's meeting was particularly interesting. I think there were a lot of opportunities for, that the committee had a chance to share in terms of synergy that's going on and some of the systems approach that was anticipated within Vision Concord. And there, either there were joint, a couple of joint meetings that were, you, you've either already reported on or were in the queue to be scheduled, as well as some, a couple of the committees who are anticipating more articles are already speaking to other committees where there's some reference for them to do so. So that engendered an interesting conversation. I met with the, I also attended the White Pond Public Forum. The FinCom meeting, the depth subcommittee reported out their final report to the FinCom this last week. And basically that committee report just sort of documents the process that exists and sort of our policies and for how debt is handled in the town. They did look at a couple comparative towns in terms of how, how it's handled. They also reported out that they had met jointly with the school committee to, to just understand the school budget and terminology that's used. And they felt that that had been a very productive meeting. It was yet another example of sort of this synergy and systems approach that's going on between committees. The school committee is in a good position in terms of finances for next year, given all the uncertainty that's, lies ahead. But I think that uncertainty in terms of budgets and, and what the state's going to be facing in terms of their own budget in the main has dictated the two-year delay that the school building committee is thinking about. I think it's all related in terms of what may lie ahead in terms of some pretty tough budgets to deal with. And I think that captures the majority of some things that have been going on in terms of committees.
Linda.
Yes.
Given the sort of tight fiscal situation that we expect to face next year, could we get, or and maybe this is also for Stephen, could we get a briefing from our town finance director? Maybe sometime in the late January, you know, to kind of get a provision, a provision of what we're coming up against as we approach town meeting in our own funding articles and so on.
So I've already asked Stephen to, if we could have an update on the, how the COVID funds have been spent sometime in January. And so, you know, this is something that would, could dovetail, I think.
We'll be.
Yes.
We'll be, we'll be presenting, we'll be developing and the town manager's budget starting in, in January. And so I think, Matt, to your request, I mean, I think I'd like to have a chance to, to work on that a little bit. And then certainly I could present, once I get into that, how things are looking. I mean, we're not going to know the state aid numbers for months.
Yeah, I know. And it'll be, it's too soon now to know anything. But at some point, we are going to have to make it, you know, clearer.
So, and can I just make a comment about the, the middle school?
Yes.
Because, because I mean, Matt made the same comment and as a, as a, as a member of the middle school building committee. And I will say that I am also a part of the executive team for a third term. So we've had a lot of conversations about restarting the project. But I think the original timeline that got set, you know, really pre-COVID was really aggressive. And I think people really wanted to push to try and avoid a mid-year move-in. And so they were putting forward, like I said, a highly aggressive, everything needed to fall in place at a certain, like just so, with very little margin for error to meet that original timeline. And so the two-year delay really is in large part because of COVID. And I think if the pandemic is, is really, is really, I don't want to speak to superintendent, but I think the, the aversion, what I heard is the aversion to a mid-year move is much less than it was before. Because I think of the adaptability, we've all had to do, all had to develop. But it really isn't like we were just coasting along and in two years this got added to the schedule. The, the circumstances to read the, meet the original schedule, I never really felt like we're going to fall into place. And so now it's, I think we're on a much more realistic timeline.
Okay. So are we ready to move on? I'd like to move on to miscellaneous correspondence. I would comment that we've received a significant number of alleged complaints regarding the use of the Estherbrook Trail from one of the defendants in particular. And we also received another communication from someone in town who expressed their views regarding their disappointment that the Select Board continues to defend this particular lawsuit for the use of Estherbrook Roads on behalf of the public. And that was basically the correspondence I've received this week. All right. I opened it up now for public comment if, if there are any. Okay. Yes. Mr. Galus.
Yes, thank you. Mark Galus, 62 Prescott Road. Thank you for all this deep discussion. I'm glad to hear about all these things and I appreciate very much too the sort of extension, extensive discussion about White Pond, because obviously that's a very precious part of Concord and we need to do it right. I have one request though, I, with regard to the small modifications of the TIF document, I don't find that posted anywhere. Could the public please get a copy of that? I think the more eyes on these little things, the better. You got to make sure that some, something doesn't inadvertently change in a non-furtuitous way. And happy winter solstice to everybody.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn and before doing so, wish everyone a safe holiday week.
Thank you. Move to adjourn. Second, and I'd also like to add alongside Linda, that same wish of happy solstice, happy whatever is celebrated. And mostly stay home, wear a mask when you leave. And I guess we'll all talk to one another. Actually, it won't be the new year. It'll still be, it'll still be December next week.
Till 2020.
I know. This is a year I can't wait to say goodbye to.
All right. So we have a second. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Quiet time.
Yeah.
Happy holidays.
Hey, don't forget to look outside at the star.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Very good.